Yesterday. With that, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Councilmember Lightfoot, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, well, there's many reasons and occasions to celebrate in the month of June. And I'm joined by Councilmember Lightfoot, and we have a special recognition that I would first like to invite Derek Dunham to join me and Councilmember Lightfoot here in the front. Is Derek here? So Derek wrote a book titled, "I'm Saved, Now What: Eight Ways to Live as a Saved Kid." Derek, you are a beacon of hope in our community. And we hope this certificate of recognition shows our appreciation for the hard work you have put into writing your book. We are very proud of you. And I want you to know that Councilmember Lightfoot was really forceful in making sure that you were recognized in front of your community. Continue to be a great role model for your friends and family, and we'll take a moment to just take a few pictures.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for taking their time to get out and celebrate me for at least being a beacon of support for our community and hope. So I just thank you for that. Thank you for this thing. I've never gotten this stuff before. So, thank you for that, and just thank you. Yeah, first of many, thank you.
So now I'd like to invite all of my colleagues to join me in the front to celebrate our city's crossing guards. So I apologize in advance if I butcher your name, please forgive me. But please come up as I say your name and join us at the front of the dais here. Brenda W. Billups, Alex Alexander, Bernard Daniels, Sherry McKnight, Christina White, David A. King, Joanne Z. Dondorfer, James Caldwell, Patricia A. Feta, Dawn Marie Smith, Donald W. German, Hector Maldonado, Dorothy E. Burgess, John S. Griffin, Shirley A. Carter, Ettrulia L. Harrison, Harrison, excuse me, Jennifer D. Plummer, Inez Mathis, Lorraine Y. Campbell, Sheila A. Finley, Shirley Bellinger, Rowena de Bergomaster, Yvonne Madison, Tamika Knox, Ralph Stevens, Jr., Oliver Holmes, Patricia H. McNair, Crystal Fleeck Garcia, Kimberly Bennett, Kaniak Kimball, Kiana Kimball, Douglas Knox, Robin Delorme, Duane Harris, Matthew Murray, Yvonne Leach, Denise Maddel, Tracy Barnes, Rosa Bellinger Butler, Lawrence Ford, Robert Fraser, Roosevelt Brooks, Jr., Jerome Lee, Annie Brown, Katha Richardson, Tina Lee, Lena Wilcox, Kenneth Lockett, Otha Worth, Victor Richardson, Charles Miller, Kimberly Cook, Robert Wright, Frankie Crowley, Khan Washington. Let's give them all a round of applause. So we want to take this moment to thank each and every one of you. Your work in our community does not go unnoticed. You help keep our babies safe. You help keep our children safe walking to school. As a city crossing guard, you're one of the community's unsung heroes, ensuring the safety of our little ones by helping children safely cross the street and reminding drivers of the presence of pedestrians. You allow parents to feel comfortable when their children walk or bike to school. Thank you for all you do for our community, and keep up the good work. We all on council appreciate the work that you do every day in this community. Thank you. So we will squeeze in somehow and take a picture, whatever. And then there's more. Next, we would like to recognize the representatives and individuals from the Rochester Education Justice Initiative, Reggie, at the University of Rochester who graduated last month. Would you please come up as I call your name? Representatives Joshua Dubler and Precious Bedell. And now graduates, James Boyd, Marcus Brialt, Dylan Colunio, Sarah Kuschman, Richard Gotti, Lamar Grimes, Jesse Johnston, Joseph Lacrosse, Michael Powell, Norman Pryor, Amen Pata, and Derek Sides.
We have two more staffs that I would ask you to bring up. We couldn't do it without them, and that's Ed and Thomas.
Ed, come on up, Ed and Thomas. Come on up. So we want to celebrate your milestone in academic achievement and excellence as a graduate of Rochester Educational Justice Initiative. This achievement marks a new chapter for you as you embark on your next journey. We are grateful, we are proud, and the City of Rochester is honored to celebrate this incredible accomplishment with you. Congratulations and happy graduation. Joshua Dubler and Precious Bedell, we hope you accept this proclamation on behalf of City Council to express how important your program is to the residents of the City of Rochester. Thank you. Almost there, almost there. Now, I'd also like to point out that June is Immigrant Heritage Month, which council has already recognized through a proclamation. This is particularly fitting since we are, after all, a city of immigrants, and throughout our history, many of those immigrants have been refugees. And so today, June 20th, 2023, we formally recognize International World Refugee Day. To celebrate, we invited representatives from the following refugee organizations. Please come up as I call your name. Rochester Refugee Resettlement Services, Refugees Helping Refugees, Mary's Place Refugee Outreach, Rochester Rolling Resettlement, Bantu Wasigwa, Community of Rochester, Inc., Catholic Charities Refugee Resettlement, World Relief Coalition, Baraka Muslim Charities, Keeping Our Promise, Rochester International Academy. Please give them a round of applause. City Council would like to thank each and every one of your organizations and the staff that work for you and any volunteers that participate in your organizations. You offer many initiatives to help refugees settle in their new country. Your organizations are necessary because you give refugees a fighting chance to be self-sustaining neighbors while still maintaining their own cultural heritage. With the assistance and support you are providing, refugees can develop a strong foundation to be an agent of their own advancement. And as a sanctuary city, we salute you for your work and remind everyone, everyone in Rochester, New York, all are welcome here. The members of City Council, thank you and wish you a happy World Refugee Day. Now I'll take a moment to take some pictures. And Mike Coniff, please stay up at the podium at the end for a brief presentation. Thanks.
My name is Jifa from Rochester Refugee Resettlement Services. On behalf of the Refugee Community of Rochester and all the agencies that provide refugee services, Rochester Refugee Resettlement Services present to the City of Rochester and its citizen a token of our appreciation. In a moment, a miniature sculpture will come up. Just wait for it. So, on my left here is a miniature sculpture that was commissioned by the Pope Francis. It's a full-size sculpture that represents more than 150 refugees and migrants jamming a boat, a crowded boat. These figures represent refugees and immigrants, migrants jamming. They represent many nations, countries, ages, from Moses down to today. Pope Francis had this sculpture commissioned to symbolize his love and concern for refugees and migrants of the world. You might also notice a pair of wings sticking up from the middle of the statue. These are angels' wings. This sculpture is named "Angels Unaware", taking its name from a quote from St. Paul's, a pistle. "Always treat strangers with hospitality, as many have entertained angels unaware." This statue represents the welcoming attitude of the people of Rochester over the decades to refugees from dozens of countries. So on behalf of the refugee community here, the agency that represents the refugees community here, we would like to present this certificate and as well as this sculpture to the city and to the mayor as our appreciation for all the support. So, Mayor Evan, can you please come up?
Thank you, and happy World Refugee Day. If anyone did not get the opportunity to attend the World Refugee Day this past weekend, you missed a great treat. And we are so happy that we are a welcoming city, and I want to thank you for this beautiful, beautiful display that you presented to us today. Thank you so much.
So before we conclude our presentations, we're going to have a moment of transition. I know that some folks may have to leave early, and we'll get to our council business in about a minute. Thank you.
Please take your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats.
All right, so we'll proceed with the business of the council meeting. Next, we have the approval of the minutes by Councilmember Martin.
Resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting on May 23rd, 2023 be approved as published in the official sheets of proceedings.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The following documents are hereby directed to be received and filed. The mayor submits the following: Administrative cancellation or refund of erroneous taxes and charges for the month of April, 2023; MBD grants report for the corollary period ending March 31st, 2023. The council submits — I'm sorry. The council submits disclosure of interest forms from President Melendez on introductory number 251, Vice President Lupien on introductorys number 234, 238, 256, and 258; Councilmember Gruber on introductory numbers 226, 241, 242, and 251; Councilmember Harris on introductory numbers 230, 238, 256, and 258; and Councilmembers Martin and Smith on introductory number 234.
Thank you. These documents will be received and filed. It is time for the presentation in reference of petitions and any other communications. Are there any petitions?
President Melendez.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes, I have petitions from school number 12 Anna Marie Douglas, seventh graders, the Waterbenders, for outside water fountain. A total of 515 signatures.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris, that will be received and filed. Any additional petitions? Hearing none, we will now move on to the introduction of an action upon local laws, ordinances, resolutions. Today, the mayor and I submitted four messages of necessity. Per the council rules, the city council may vote upon a resolution without reference to or discharge from a standing committee if it is accompanied by a statement of necessity of immediate passage signed by the mayor and the council president. Tonight, I am introducing four items as a statement of necessity for council consideration. During the last month, I've worked diligently to help identify tools to reallocate our underrun funds. The four items before you utilize a resolution of budgetary intent, which is a tool in our toolbox for council to express priorities and in this instance, express intent with our underrun funds in our department, a tool we have not used in many years. I've listened to my colleagues and the central staff have collaborated, worked collaboratively with the administration, OMB, law, and the mayor to present these four resolutions. We will walk through each resolution, one by one, open it up for any questions, comments, or concerns, and move forward with the vote on each as independent items. So with that, we have introductory number 264, which is a resolution of budgetary intent regarding a public utility feasibility study. I will take a motion and a second to consider introductory number 264.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. So at this time — can we get some order, please? We have to conduct the business here, so I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to discuss this. And before opening up to my colleagues for any questions, comments, or concerns, I want to take a point of privilege to make clear that this item will reallocate and authorize utilization of council underrun funds to support a feasibility study of which the City of Rochester will be part of. This will require other government entities to lead, and in no way will the City of Rochester initiate a study or RFP on its own. The parameters are intentional, as we should not ask our constituents to bear the burden of a large study at a time in which they are the most impacted ratepayers in the RGNE ecosystem. This also leaves open the possibility of other avenues to hold RGNE accountable. And I would like to leave that open for further discussion with my colleagues in the future. With that, I'll entertain any questions, comments, or concerns. Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes, Mr. President. I'm glad to support this. We have heard from a lot of our residents concerning this particular matter. I think we all have been impacted in some way, shape, or form with this discussion we've had for quite some time. However, my question, Mr. President, is that I want to know, is there a timeline attached to this particular item? Or is this just a free-fall, standing introduction? Or is there some — what are the specific ramifications and/or things that are required as far as, you know, I heard you just say that it would require other municipalities to take action first before the city would? And/or what is the timeline on that action that we're proposing to happen?
Yes, Councilmember Lightfoot. So the resolution makes it pretty clear, I think. And I think it's important to highlight this for the public. So we are looking at within the fiscal year, the upcoming fiscal year. And that's typical of, you know, when we encumber funds for various other reasons, that you would encumber them and have to have them spent within the year. In terms of what we're authorizing is also for the administration to engage in an intermunicipal agreement with other forms of government, whether that's the county or a larger entity such as the nine-county region or the state to do the work that's being proposed. So that is essentially the timeline.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And real quickly, I would just say this. This council has heard you. This council has taken action. And I hope that those who are advocating to this council so intimately will take that same energy across the street and down the street. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Martin?
Yes, I am incredibly excited to support this legislation. I want to give a huge shout out to the constituents who came to council, who wrote to us, who called, who said enough is enough. Something is wrong with RGNE, and let's take a first step and understand if it's possible for a municipal public utility. So I'm very excited to support this. I want to also thank Metro Justice for leading the charge. And I do have — so I do have one question for OMB and law. At many points through this process, different council members asked about how to use the underruns, and at different points, we were told we weren't going to be able to allocate it to things that will happen in the future. Could you explain how this all came about? And what loopholes were used in order for this budgetary intent to occur? I think it's good for the public to understand alongside folks who have been paying attention to this process.
First of all, this is an action of council. This was not something that the administration brought to council. This is something that council brought to us. And one of what we have said to you is you cannot transfer from one department to another department and tell that department what they are going to do with it in the budget. What this is, a resolution of budgetary intent, deals with remaining funds at the end of the budget year. There is a surplus of funds in the council budget at the end of this year. And a resolution of budgetary intent is a tool that is used, not when the budget's adopted, but at the end of the budget year, before the next budget is adopted, to address re-appropriating those remaining funds.
Yeah, thank you. And it would help to have that in writing to circulate amongst council members in the community for future budget years. But again, thank you to Metro Justice, to the community, the constituents who share their stories. And I'm so excited to be supporting this very socialist person-centered legislation today. today.
Councilmember Pio.
Thank you. Thank you, Stanley. I see some RGNE employees here. I want to make sure you guys understand, this is not a personal attack by any means, so please do not take this personally. I'm not sure if you're from, is any of you from corporate Spain? All right, so you're good. So don't think this is personally attacking against y'all. Something I did reach out to RGNE leadership about, and I still continue to have issues with, is the fact that we're going to be charging constituents to not have that smart reader installed. I have a huge issue with that concerning the fact that we've had other areas where they have been able to turn off utilities, not because they haven't paid, but because usage was too high. That's a problem for my constituents, and I would hope that we revisit that, not against you guys, corporate again, regarding that extra fee for something that many do not want to be installed. So for that, and many other reasons, I will certainly be voting yes for this. Thank you.
So before we move forward, in the eruption of cheers, we also did not finish the motion for consideration. So we had a motion and a second, and then we have, all in favor, please say aye for consideration? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very well. Council Vice President.
I also want to thank Metro Justice. You know, I know we started talking about this over two years ago, and you have worked so hard and so diligently, and just, I admire the work that you've done and the research that you put into this. So I'm very proud to support this legislation. President Melendez, I did have a question. Does this legislation preclude going to RFP for the study on our own if we are able to secure outside funding?
At this point, it does.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember, anyone else before I turn it back to Councilmember Martin before we move on? All right, Councilmember Martin.
So amendments to such legislation, would it go through the same process as other amendments to legislation that's previously passed?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
All right, with that, we'll proceed with the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now I would like to move us to introductory number 265, which is a resolution of budgetary intent regarding the evaluation of neighborhood service centers. I will take a motion and a second to consider introductory number 265.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so before we move into any questions, comments, or concerns, I just want to highlight a few things. So our neighborhood service centers are a major asset in our community. With the NBN model resurfacing in some form, and with the conversation around municipal buildings continually evolving, council members would like to evaluate the functions and use of NSCs to service the public. This could include co-locating services, identifying where NSCs should be physically located, and what types of services and leadership structure should be in place to serve NSCs and to reimagine NBN model. With that, I'll open it up to any questions, comments, concerns. Councilmember Pio.
Thank you. I'm very excited about this. I believe our NSCs are pivotal to our neighborhoods, and I would love to see how we can strengthen them more, and also have more full-time employees, especially with the grant writing. So hopefully this takes care of that, but I look forward to seeing if this produces anything positive for the community. Thank you.
Any other additional questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'll take, yeah, Councilmember Gruber.
Yeah, I would just add to this. I think it's particularly important that we're voting on this study in conjunction with a vote later where we're going to be renewing the lease on, I forget which of the four quadrants, but I think locations are a really big part of this study and making sure that we have the physical space, right, so that the NSCs can be incredibly accessible for the most amount of people that need them. Thank you.
All right. All right, so if we're good, we'll entertain, actually, we'll vote on the item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 266 is a resolution regarding workflow study of the Rochester Police Department. I'll take a motion and a second to consider introductory number 266. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye of consideration? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. So once again, I would like to thank the administration for the answers to our questions during budget hearings. We received a fair amount of information. However, the council would like to continue to understand workflow in these changing times, and how we might be informed and helpful in making decisions in the future as it pertains to RPD. The workflow analysis, which I know is something that Chief Smith has and the administration has been working on, will provide the council with an understanding of the current challenges, but we also are interested in better understanding the need for municipal buildings related to RPD, response times, GPS data, and more. With that, I will open it up for questions, comments, or concerns. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Thank you to the administration and to the council. I'm really excited to see that this is moving forward because we really need to get a better understudy of how our police department works, and looking at the staffing model is very important to how we can continue to realign and reimagine parts of our police department so we can better serve our community.
Any, Councilmember Pio?
Thank you. Councilmember Lightfoot, I thought we had a blue collar. Didn't you push for a blue ribbon research already? I thought this was a couple of years ago we pushed for this.
Not, something like that, but we never, actually, the executive order 203 ended up coming in, and that's, you know, kind of circumvented that whole process after the pandemic.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Just have a comment.
Councilmember Martin.
So I see this study as partially a result of several people in the community speaking up and asking questions about RPD, the budget, what's happening with overtime, the lack of transparency around data, what does OBI do? So all this, all these questions, I hope will be answered through the study, and again, I'm grateful for community members for asking questions and figuring out how we can better use our dollars as a municipality. So I'm excited to see the outcome of this study, and I hope these lead to better transparency from RPD and accountability around how taxpayer dollars are used.
Council Vice President.
I know that this study may not be the study that gives us the data that I'm going to ask for. I've asked several years in a row now for data on traffic stops. Who are we pulling over? What are the demographics? Where are we pulling them over? Are we searching them? What are we finding? And this data is really important just to figure out what's going on. You know, it's not, it's no secret that in many areas of the country, and I don't think that we're excluded, disproportionate number of people of color, especially men, are being pulled over. And often, you know, they're being searched, and I want to really understand what it looks like, and I want to know, you know, we put a lot of money into OBI. What's it going to take for us to record this data so that we can take a look at it?
Yes, I think, Council Vice President, that might be a conversation to continue, and I hope that we can work with the administration to work on that issue, but related to this specific legislative item, I don't know that that's a question related to this.
Well, I also don't see Nick Petiti here, so, but I'd like to put that on the record and get an answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin, final question, and then we'll move to a vote.
Yeah, so what is the role of the Police Accountability Board in this study? How will the information be made accessible to them, and how will the information they have access to and what they found be included in this study?
I think first and foremost, this is an internal to RPD study in terms of understanding the needs and the dynamics of what the police department wants to assess in terms of their own staffing models and those kind of things moving forward. I think after that, I don't have a good answer for you, but I'm willing to have a conversation to see if there is some other role. All right, with that, I'll move to a vote. All in favor of introductory number 266, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 267 is a resolution of budgetary intent regarding investments in affordable housing and social emotional wellness programs. I'll take a motion and a second to consider introductory number 267.
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so I will lead us off once again to the administration. I would like to lead off with a thank you. The budget that is, that we'll be voting on tonight and the projects in the pipeline reflect a commitment to affordable housing, and we know we can continue to do more. We also appreciate the allocation in the budget to support mental health and recreation centers as we continue to respond to the needs of our citizens. While this resolution may not provide significant funding, this will provide some level of resource to support gaps. We have heard the message loud and clear, our constituents want more options when it comes to quality, affordable housing. As we continue to understand the post-pandemic challenges related to mental health, or maybe even the challenges that were in front of us and we're too blind to see, this council recognizes the importance of stepping into the gap. While we do not have a health department or an office of mental health, we acknowledge that we have a civic duty to utilize our facilities, staff, and partnerships to fill gaps. That is what this legislation will help us do. And with that, I will open up to any questions, comments, or concerns. Councilmember Martin.
In number three of the transmittal, it says, "The mayor shall draft such plan with the input of NBD and the Committee of Recreation and Human Services of Council." Materially, what does that look like?
Yeah, I think that is something that we need to discuss further, but the idea is that the membership of each of those committees should have a say and a sway in how we allocate the funding from the council.
Is there an example of when one of our committees has done something like this in relation to working with the administration? It's a new thing I'm seeing written here, that I haven't seen examples of it being written out in legislation or with that clear expectation, and the process for how that feedback will be received, what is the accountability mechanism for listening, all of that. So I'm very interested in how that materially works.
And I think that, you know, we will work with the administration and the chairs of the committees to come up with a process where council members who are part of each committee will have an opportunity to weigh in. Councilmember Smith.
I do believe the most important way in there is the community, the people who are directly impacted by the housing crisis and homelessness, and who are experts in their own lives and what they need. So hopefully, there will be a huge community input session around that before the plan is developed.
I'm certain that we can work with the administration to achieve that. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will move to a vote on the item. All those in favor of introductory number 267, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will now move on to the reports of standing committees and action thereon. Chairperson Lightfoot, the Parks and Public Works Committee report, please.
Certainly, Mr. President. To the council, the Parks and Public Works Committee recommends for adoption the following titled legislation. Introduction number 216, authorizing agreement of appropriations for the 2025 Preventive Maintenance Project. Introduction number 217, a resolution authorizing implementation and funding in the first instance, 100% of federal state aid, Marchesele program aid eligible costs of the Culver Road and University Avenue PM Transportation Federal Aid Project and appropriating funds thereof. Introduction number 218, authorizing agreement appropriations for the Interloop North Transformation Project. Introductory number 219, authorizing implementation and funding in the first instance of state aid program eligible costs of the Capitol Project Interloop North Transformational Project and appropriating funds thereof. Introductory number 2020, 220, excuse me, Bond Ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing issuance of 1,684,000 bonds of said city to finance the 2023 Annual Parking Garage Repair and Reconstruction Project. Introduction number 221, Amending Ordinance 202066 related to the Brewery Line Trail Project. Introduction number 222, authorizing aminatory agreement for the Duran Eastman Park Beach Site Improvements. Introduction number 223, authorizing agreement for the Blue Cross Arena Lobby Floor Replacement. Introduction number 224, authorizing agreement for an annual repair and renovation program for the Honorable Loretta C. Scott Center for Human Services. Introduction number 225, authorizing an agreement for relocating the Office of Training and Safety. Introduction number 226, Appropriating American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Funds and authorizing an aminatory agreement for the Maplewood Branch Library Expansion Project. Introduction number 227, authorizing an agreement for an assessment of the Special Operations K-9 Tactical Facility on Child Street, respectfully submitted by council members Dr. Mitch Gruber, Jose Pio, Vice President Mary Lupien, President Miguel Melendez, and myself, Willie J. Lightfoot.
Thank you, Chairperson Lightfoot. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 216, authorizing agreements and appropriations for the 2025 Preventative Maintenance Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 217, Resolution Authorizing the Implementation and Funding in the First Instance, 100% of the federal aid and state Marchesele program aid eligible costs of the Culver Road and University Avenue PM Transportation Federal Aid Project and appropriating funds thereof. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Introductory number 218, authorizing agreements and appropriations for the Interloop North Transformation Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Introductory number 219, authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance of the state aid program eligible costs of a Capitol Project entitled Interloop North Transformation Project and appropriating funds therefore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Introductory number 220, Bond Ordinance of the City of Rochester, New York, authorizing the issuance of 1,684,000 bonds of said city to finance the 2023 Annual Parking Garage Repair and Reconstruction Project. This requires a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Pio.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Lupien.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Introductory number 221, Amending Ordinance Number 2020-66 relating to the Brewery Line Trail Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 222, authorizing aminatory agreement for the Duran Eastman Park Beach Site Improvements. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Introductory number 223, authorizing agreement for the Blue Cross Arena Lobby Floor Replacement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Introductory number 224, authorizing agreement for an annual repair and renovation program for the Honorable Loretta C. Scott Center for Human Services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Introductory number 225, authorizing agreement for relocating the Office of Training and Safety. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Introductory number 226, Appropriating American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Funds and authorizing an aminatory agreement for the Maplewood Branch Library Expansion Project. Councilmember Gruber has submitted a disclosure of interest form, and he is the council liaison to the Rochester Public Library Board, but he may discuss and vote on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 227, authorizing an agreement for an assessment of the Special Operations K-9 Tactical Facility on Child Street. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chairperson Patterson, the Neighborhood and Business Development Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the council, the Neighborhood and Business Development Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Introduction number 228, authorizing agreements for appraisal services. Introduction number 229, authorizing a lease of space at 232 Mill Street. Introduction number 230, authorizing the acceptance of real estate by donation. Introduction number 233, authorizing a lease agreement for the Southeast Neighborhood Service Center. Introductory number 235, authorizing a lease agreement for UGI Energy Services LLC. Introduction number 236, appropriating the 2019-2020, sorry, 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan Funds and authorizing agreements for additional emergency solution grant program services. Introduction number 237, authorizing agreement for economic development services. The Neighborhood and Business Development Committee recommends the following entitled legislation to be held in committee. Introduction number 231, authorizing lease agreements for downtown police department offices. Introduction number 232, authorizing parking agreements for downtown police department offices. Introduction number 234, authorizing ammendatory purchase option agreement for the development of 1 and 2-12 Clarence Park. This report is respectfully submitted by council members LaShay Harris, Kimberly Smith, myself, Michael A. Patterson, council vice president Mary Lupien, and council president Miguel A. Melendez Jr.
Thank you, Chairperson Patterson. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 228, authorizing agreements for appraisal services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 229, authorizing the lease of space at 232 Mill Street. Authorizing a use and operation agreement for city-owned riverfront facilities. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Introductory number 230, authorizing the acceptance of real estate by donation. Councilmember Harris has submitted a disclosure of interest form as a member of the Land Bank Board. Councilmember Harris sits as a member representative of city council. She may discuss and vote on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 233, authorizing a lease agreement for the Southeast Neighborhood Service Center. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 235, authorizing a lease agreement with the, with UGI Energy Services LLC. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 236, appropriating 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan Funds and authorizing agreements for additional emergency solutions grant program services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 237, authorizing agreement for economic development services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chairperson Patterson, do you have a motion related to introductory number 231?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 231 from committee.
Have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor of discharging from committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
No.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Pio.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Lupien.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes, motion carries. So now we'll vote on introductory number 231. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
No.
We'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
No.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Pio.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Lupien.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes. Motion carries. So next, Chair Patterson, do you have a motion related to introductory number 232?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 232 from committee.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of discharging introductory number 232 from committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now let's vote on introductory number 232. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, Chair Patterson, do we have a motion related to introductory number 234?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 234 from committee.
Have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor of discharging introductory number 234 from committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we'll vote on introductory 234. Before we do, council members Lupien, Martin, and Smith have submitted a disclosure of interest form as members of the City Roots Board. Councilmember Lupien, Martin, and Smith all sit on the board, not as a function of being on city council, so they must recuse and abstain from discussion in the vote. So we'll move to vote on this item. Introductory number 234, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have three abstentions. Thank you. Chairperson Harris, the Recreation and Human Services Committee report, please.
Thank you, President Melendez. To the council, the Recreation and Human Services Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Introductory number 238, authorizing funding and agreements for 2023 Summer Food Service Program. Introductory number 262, authorizing agreement for the Youth Summer Growth and Development Program as amended. This report will be respectfully submitted by council member Willie J. Lightfoot, council member Stanley Martin, vice president, council member Mary Lupien, and president, council member Miguel A. Melendez, and myself, LaShay D. Harris, council member.
Thank you, Chairperson Harris. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 238, authorizing funding and agreements for the 2023 Summer Food Service Program. Councilmembers Harris and Lupien has submitted disclosure of interest forms as employees of the Rochester City School District. Both councilmember Harris and Lupien may discuss and vote on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Introductory number 262, authorizing agreements for the Youth Summer Growth and Development Program as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Chairperson Gruber, the Finance Committee report, please.
To the council, the Finance Committee recommends for adoption the following entitled legislation. Introductory number 239, authorizing an agreement for workers' compensation case management and medical claim services. Introductory number 240, authorizing an ammendatory agreement for budget software and services. Introductory number 241, authorizing an agreement for the Clarissa Street Uprooted Exhibit. Introductory number 242, amending ordinance 2022-296 relating to the public library's Rundell Building Air Quality Improvements. Introductory number 243, authorizing an agreement for undoing racism, community organizing workshops. Introductory number 244, authorizing an agreement for Managed Security Operations Center Services as amended. Introductory number 245, authorizing an agreement for fireworks displays. Introductory number 246, authorizing agreement for the 2023 Puerto Rican Festival. Introductory number 247, authorizing agreement related to the 2023 Rock Holiday Village Event. Introductory number 248, authorizing an agreement to implement a cloud-based internal audit management solution. Introductory number 249, amending the 2022-23 budget by appropriating unanticipated revenue to the operating budget of the police department. Introductory number 250, authorizing competitive grant applications. Introductory number 251, a resolution approving the 2023-24 debt limit for general municipal purposes. Introductory number 252, authorizing funding and amending the 2022-23 budget in relation to the New York State Healthcare and Mental Hygiene Worker Bonus Program. Introductory number 253, authorizing professional services agreement with WXXI Public Broadcasting Council for broadcasting city council meetings. Introductory number 254, authorizing an agreement with General Code LLC for publication of the city charter and code. The Finance Committee recommends the following entitled legislation to be held in committee. Introductory number 255, adoption of the budget estimates for municipal purposes for the 23-24 fiscal year, appropriation of some set forth therein, and approving commercial refuse fees. Introductory number 256, adoption of the budget estimates for school purposes for the 23-24 fiscal year, and appropriation of some set forth therein. Introductory number 257, levying taxes for municipal purposes for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023, and expiring June 30, 2024. Introductory number 258, levying taxes for school purposes for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023, and expiring June 30, 2024. Introductory number 259, local improvement ordinance, street cleaning, street and sidewalks no removal, and hazardous sidewalk repair commencing July 1, 2023, and expiring June 30, 2024. Introductory number 260, confirming the assessments, amounts, and charges to be inserted in the annual tax rolls for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023, and expiring June 30, 2024. Introductory number 261, amending the municipal code with respect to water rates. And introductory number 263, appropriating funds and amending the 2022-23 budget to support the public library's MiFi program. This report was respectfully submitted by council members Michael Patterson, Mary Lupien, Kim Smith, Miguel Melendez, and myself, Mitch Gruber.
Thank you, Chairperson Gruber. That report will be received, filed, and published, and we'll proceed with the vote. Introductory number 239, authorizing an agreement for workers' compensation case management and medical claim services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 240, authorizing an ammendatory agreement for budget software and services. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Introductory number 241, authorizing an agreement for the Clarissa Street Uprooted Exhibit. Councilmember Gruber submitted a disclosure of interest form as the council liaison to the Rochester Public Library Board. He may discuss and vote on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 242, amending ordinance 2022-296 relating to the public library's Rundell Building Air Quality Improvements. Once again, councilmember Gruber has submitted a disclosure of interest form as the council liaison to Rochester Public Library Board, and he may discuss and vote on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 243, authorizing an agreement for undoing racism, community organizing workshops. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Pio.
Nay.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Lupien.
Absolutely.
President Melendez.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Introductory number 244, authorizing an agreement for Managed Security Operations Center Service as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 245, authorizing an agreement for firework displays. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Gruber. Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
No.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Pio.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Lupien.
Yes.
President Melendez.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Introductory number 246, authorizing an agreement for the 2023 Puerto Rican Festival. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Do you allow a little bit of time for comments? I know you're going through really fast, but...
Yes, please, at any point, pause me if I'm rushing through.
Thank you.
Introductory number 247, authorizing an agreement related to the 2023 Rock Holiday Village Event. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 248, authorizing an agreement to implement a cloud-based internal audit management solution. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 249, amending the 2022-23 budget by appropriating unanticipated revenue to the operating budget of the Rochester Police Department. Councilmember Martin.
Yes, thank you. I will be voting no on this item as the police budget for this year has exceeded the estimated budget from last year significantly. And I think funds could be better allocated to other services that better serve our community.
All right. All in favor, please say, actually, I'm going to say roll call vote.
Councilmember Gruber.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
No.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Pio.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Smith. Vice President Lupien.
No.
President Melendez.
Yes. Motion carries. Introductory number 251, a resolution approving the 2023-24 debt limit for general municipal purposes. Councilmember Gruber submitted a disclosure of interest form as the council liaison to the Rochester Public Library. He may discuss and vote on this item. I also have submitted a disclosure of interest form as a member of the Rochester Riverside Convention Center Board. But I may discuss and vote on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Introductory number 252, authorizing funding and amending the 2022-23 budget in relation to New York State Healthcare and Mental Hygiene Worker Bonus Program. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So I moved over 250, and I want to jump back to that momentarily since we're still in this section. So introductory number 250, authorizing competitive grant applications. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll move to introductory number 253. Authorizing a professional services agreement with WXXI Public Broadcasting Council for broadcasting city council meetings. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Introductory number 254, authorizing an agreement with General Code LLC for publication of the city charter and code. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Chairperson Gruber, I know we have a series of introductories that we will be moving out of committee, so I'll turn it to you related to introductory number 255, adoption of the budget estimates for municipal purposes for the 2023-24 fiscal year, appropriations of some sets forth therein, and approving commercial refuse fees.
I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 255 from committee. Can I have a second?
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of discharging introductory number 255 from committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So before we vote on introductory number 255, I believe we have an amendment.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes, so over the weekend, or I submitted a couple of amendments to the budget and with the statement of necessity proposed by the president on behalf of council, the only one that is, hasn't been addressed is the Police Accountability Board. I am submitting an amendment to reallocate funds from undistributed to councilmen and clerk to fully fund the Police Accountability Board. I'm happy to answer any questions. But my decision in collaboration with some of my colleagues and community members to introduce this amendment is to ensure that we are funding the Police Accountability Board and fully supporting their staffing needs. A big thing that moved me to make this decision was recognizing that their budget was cut significantly amidst union negotiations. I do believe there's an argument that that action is anti-union. And in order to make sure that they know that we support their effort to unionize, to let them know that we support the folks who have stayed, the new ED, the board, and all the members of the community who overwhelmingly voted to have a Police Accountability Board, I would like to amend their budget to have a full $5 million this year.
Can we actually have this item in writing? And can we have a paper copy of it? I haven't seen a paper copy.
They were placed... They were placed on your desk and also emailed to you, councilmember.
I believe, Chief of Staff Smith, we do have paper copies at the dais. Okay. I know we have a lot of paper today, Mike.
And so, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pio.
Thank you. Quick question, what was the PAB's expenses last year? Total expenses?
I'm going to look to the Chief of Staff table over there and...
The reason why I'm asking is if we're gonna be increasing budget, a lot of times what they do is that they will work to spend more to get to that budget as opposed to working within their limits, so...
Sure. I believe, I don't have an exact dollar amount, but the underrun from what was budgeted was approximately one point one million dollars.
Right, and I...
Underrun?
Correct.
So, they did not spend that amount?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I believe, just to comment on this, I believe that the actual expenditures, and please, you know, we can give you the real number, was closer to two and a half million this year.
So, I do wanna also say, the amount that was spent is not reflective of the actual needs of the PAB. There were many requests for staffing that went unfulfilled because the president and some council members had a budget freeze that prevented them from hiring and meeting the needs. So, I don't think that this budget, also amidst a lot of the different issues that were going on, is representative of the actual needs of the Police Accountability Board. I would also like to say, there was an amazing presentation done by the executive director and senior staff. And in that presentation, the amount said five million, and it also included very interesting ideas that we are hearing from community around restoration. It also allows for a significantly staffed investigative body, which they need. They need attorneys. So, again, my argument here is the current budget does not... This year's budget is not enough to look at and say, okay, this is what they need because of a budget freeze, because of internal issues. That doesn't allow us to get a full picture about the actual needs of the PAB.
So, I got councilmember Gruber, councilmember Patterson, and Vice President, and then I'm gonna chime in. Councilmember Gruber?
Thanks, President Melendez. I believe we covered most of this during the budget hearing, but I just wanna refresh my memory about some things. The PAB staff submitted a budget request to you, probably back in February, was it?
Yes, sir.
What was the amount that they requested?
So, the amount that was requested by the staff of the Police Accountability Board is what is before the council, less one position, which we, after consulting with HR, went back and negotiated with the staff to say that there was too many top-heavy positions, and we eliminated one position. So, this is the budget before all of council is effectively the budget that was submitted by the staff of the Police Accountability Board.
And just to be crystal clear, the PAB staff, when submitting a budget request to city council, did not request five million dollars?
That is accurate, and what councilmember Martin is referring to was a presentation, a work session more or less, that was done here in council chambers in the month of May, I believe. And at that time, that was submitted... That was not submitted to us. That was shown to us after the fact as something that council should consider. But I would reiterate that not only was the budget submitted by the staff, they submitted an org chart, they submitted a whole nine yards, including a reimagined PAB. This was submitted by the staff, and certainly I carried it forward for council consideration.
Well, I'm very happy to continue to support the PAB in fulfilling what it is that they need. I will not be supporting increasing the budget to beyond what they had asked for, but thank you for the clarity.
Councilmember Patterson.
So, I was at that presentation, and it was a very well-done presentation. But the challenge to councilmember Gruber's point, they did submit a budget, and that's the budget that we had before them at this point in time. I am not going to look past their profound and colossal failures under their previous leadership, though I do give them credit for the amazing work that they are attempting to do now, and I am hopeful that they will continue to do so. I am certainly willing to consider anything going forward if they can show that they are still doing the work that we created them to do for the people. And if at that time, there is a need for additional funding, I believe as a body, the vast majority of us are open to considering that. But to simply say at this point in time that we are just going to make a change in their budget, I'm not in favor of that, no.
Councilmember, Council Vice President, followed by Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Harris.
So, you know, earlier on, when we began our budget discussions of what our council budget would be, you know, there were statements that the PAB was not gonna get their five million cut from the administration nor council. And I understand that they submitted a budget that said they would use three point five million, and that a significant portion of the remainder of funds would be for staffing. I don't see a problem with giving the full five million, knowing that we still have in place that staffing and expenditure is not related to hearing cases is not gonna be fulfilled, and that, you know, if they do an amazing job, and they find that they need those positions, that the money is there. But at the end of the day, it's more money in the council office that if they don't spend it, we spend on the priorities that are reflective of what the community is asking of us.
Councilmember Smith, followed by Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So, I'm speaking on behalf of the PAB as the PAB liaison, working with the PAB and council. And I know that the PAB has had some significant challenges in the past, but I believe they have shown that with the right leadership, that they can step up, perform, and meet all of council's expectations. And during that last presentation, I believe they met all of council's expectations. The budget was... The budget was submitted by the interim director based on where they were and where they are now. The five million is regarding where they need to be and where this community needs them to be. And so, as they move from having an interim director to a more permanent director, their vision will not be as short-term. They will be able to see the long vision and be able to effectively use that five million dollars. So, I believe, Mr. President, in what you said when you mentioned that if the PAB has needs that extend beyond the three point five million, that you will certainly take that into consideration, have those conversations, and see to it that they get what they need. And so, I think in this moment, given the relationship, the previous relationship with the council and the PAB, there is not a lot of trust. And so, I do believe that we are either going to tell them that they will get that five million in writing. I believe in good faith, that's the direction that we should take. If the charter says five million, we need to show good faith. They have met our expectations and reserve the five million.
With that, I'll turn it to Councilmember Harris.
So, I'd like to add that I'm looking forward to the PAB doing their job and be consistent in doing their job. And for that being said, I will reserve and continue to vote, you know, as such with what the budget is set at now. I believe that the five million that they are requesting, or that you guys are requesting for them, we should continue to have discussions and reevaluations of their progress because as a council member, we are fiduciary responsible for how our taxpayers' dollars are spent. And, you know, the behavior in the past has not been acceptable of the PAB. Of course, we know that we have a new administration. So, I think that moving forward, we should continue to evaluate and look for the results that the citizens need for the PAB to move forward. So, with that being said, I will vote as accordingly, and I look forward to having those discussions.
So, before we vote on the proposed amendment, I just wanna say a couple of quick things. So, the PAB submitted budget materials to me and the staff that are a tune of about one... Actually, I'll give you facts. A million forty thousand nine hundred dollars in non-personnel expenses, and two million four hundred and sixty-five dollars, five hundred and four... Two million four hundred and sixty-five thousand five hundred and four dollars in personnel expenses. So, it was a three point five million dollar submission. Their proposal included a decrease from fifty-seven full-time positions to thirty-one full-time positions and two part-time positions. After the materials were submitted to council, city council staff reviewed the requested personnel changes with HR per the standard OMB protocol. This is what we do every budget season. A meeting was also held with HR, OMB, myself, council chief of staff, deputy chief of staff, interim PAB director, PAB chief of operations, and the city clerk to review personnel changes across the entire department. The final budget submission to OMB included three point four million allocated to the PAB with thirty full-time positions and two part-time positions. The annual proposed budget of the Police Accountability Board should provide sufficient funding to carry out the powers and duties set forth in the PAB article. There is no article, by the way. There's nowhere in the charter that it says a set dollar amount in terms of the budget of the PAB. And I think that, you know, in this conversation, as councilmember Patterson alluded to, if we see the results, there's no question that we can have additional conversations. But I believe that this budget is adequate, and frankly, I'm not sure that the PAB will spend it this year. Just based on the fact that there's gonna be a lot of staffing up and other things that are going on. I also want to dispel a myth, and this will be my final point on the item. Throughout this year, and I do want to commend the interim executive director, Sherri Walker-Coard, for the work that she is doing with the staff, with, you know, the board, working collaboratively with city council, working collaboratively with the administration to try to stand up this agency. We've had a lot of communications, and we've approved a lot of positions. And one of the things that I expressed to the interim executive director that I did not wanna improve positions that were... That I was not sure would be in this budget. So, we needed to make sure that we went through that with a fine-tooth comb. And every position that has been submitted to the council office, and I think everyone can attest to this, that's been part of the process, has been approved. Now, there's a process for getting positions posted, and those things take a little bit of time, but everything that has been submitted through the council office has been approved. So, I just wanna make sure that on the record, I dispel some of those myths that I have been being a roadblock related to this. So, the amendment is before us. All of us have had a chance to take a look at it. So, I would like to move this item to a vote.
I do have...
Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, so, again, like councilmember Smith said, right? There was a submission of what they need now, in the moment amidst chaos, to get going, get settled?
Yes, councilmember Martin, let me say this much. Very clearly, the staff submitted a two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-four budget. This is their submission. They submitted it for the two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-four year. If now, there's a change of heart, that is not our concern or our issue because this is their submitted budget that we are planning to vote on. I just wanna make that very clear, and I will be happy to forward these emails related to their submission to all of council so that everyone can see exactly what was submitted, how it was submitted, and that it came from the staff.
But the change of heart didn't happen now, right? Through many conversations with different representatives of the PAB, there was commitment from you saying you would fund at five million, right? To me even, you said that. You did.
No, what I have said is the same thing that councilmember Patterson just said, which is if we see that there is a true need for additional resources, the council will have a conversation about making sure that the PAB has what it needs to do the functions of its job. So, that is exactly what I said, verbatim. On the record, it's here now, and that is what I've said all along. So, with that, I'm gonna move us through...
I think in submitting... Yeah, and just... And I think in submitting this amendment, right? It gave... It was an opportunity to align what you just said with actual action, right? Because you're saying if everything is fine, they'll get the money they need. We trust the new executive, interim executive director. We're seeing a lot of changes, so...
So, let's show and prove then. Let's show and prove. So, with that, I'm gonna ask us to move to the amendment, move the amendment to a vote.
I don't think it's inappropriate to just like... Councilmember Lupien was gonna say something, right? And the chair of the Finance Committee, who's going through this, is councilmember Gruber. So, I think at the very least, you should speak. I can be done.
I will allow Vice President and Councilmember Gruber, and then we'll move to a vote.
I don't have a comment. I'm looking forward to voting and moving the meeting along.
All right, Council Vice President.
I just wanna highlight that this amendment before us, even though, you know, it's the intention is that it be for the PAB, it's just transmitting an amount of money from undistributed to the council office. And that's all we are able to do in the budget, right? We can't direct the funds. So, I am in support of moving money from undistributed to the council office.
Yes, Councilmember Patterson.
Just a process question for Corporation Council, and please forgive me. We have to vote... Do we have to vote to consider the amendment prior to voting on the amendment?
No, you vote on... The amendment's been moved.
Okay.
And it'll be seconded, and then you vote on the amendment.
Okay. All right, with this, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
We still need to second it, though, right? Second.
Did we get a... I thought we got a second on the... Yeah, we got the motion in a second on this already.
And then if the amendment fails, you move on with the main vote. If the amendment passes, you move on to vote.
As amended, right. So, can we get clarity on who seconded the motion? It was Council Vice President.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Gruber?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
No.
Councilmember Martin?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Patterson?
No.
Councilmember Pio?
No.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Lupien?
Yes.
President Melendez?
No. Motion fails. And now, any... Let's move on to discussion of introductory number two fifty-five. I'm certain that every council member has a comment or feedback before the vote. So, I'll start to my left, and we'll just run across the dais, starting with councilmember Gruber.
I'll try to keep my remarks brief, but I do just wanna say thank you to the administration. There's so much in this budget, and one of the things that it really proves is how much happens in these four walls every day, not to mention all the other facilities we have. And I do think city government is generally getting harder. I think probably a lot of you who've been around for a long time can feel it getting harder. And I just wanna say I appreciate all the work that went into creating the budget. I particularly appreciate Mayor Evans, who it feels like has been in this chair for a very long time, but it's actually, this is his first... This is your first full-year budget. And I just wanna note that some of the things we've been talking about for a long time, even when you were a councilperson, we can see bear fruit in this budget. Our centers, extended hours, big investments in libraries, very excited about what we're seeing over at Maplewood and Lincoln. Park maintenance and cleanup are huge new investments. Trees, all the investments in trees and trying to bring some environmental justice to our community as well. Not to mention, of course, all the work with the Office of Violence Prevention, and so much more. But I just wanna say I appreciate it, and I mostly appreciate of all those things that there's beginning to be a culture shift as well, that the administration is really moving towards trying to turn part-time jobs into full-time jobs. And I think that does a number of things. It makes us the employer that we want to be. It it makes us the employer that we want to be, but it also creates more stability in services. People need to be able to have their librarian or their rec center employee that they get to see all the time for with some continuity. So none of that stuff is lost on on me and this budget, and I'm very much looking forward to approving it and supporting it. That's not to say we don't have problems and and challenges. I think public safety is something that every city is struggling with right now. I think recruitment and retention for pretty much every job, but certainly in public safety. And we all know that our housing stock continues to be a real struggle. We see investments in those things here, there's a lot of work to do. But I'm ultimately very happy about what I see in this budget and look forward to approving it. Thank you very much.
Council member Harris?
I'll just keep it brief. Thank you very much to the mayor and his administration for a solid budget this year, and I look forward to working with you. Of course, all of the things that council member, chairperson Gruber had mentioned are things that I I echo. Thank you.
Council member Lightfoot?
Um, yes, I I also to echo the sentiments of our colleagues here to my left. But I would also add for there's always room for improvement. And what I will say is what I would like to see going forward as we move forward after this budget and moving into, because the next year budget starts immediately after this one, it's probably already started, actually, is that we what we realize in regards to public safety. And ladies and gentlemen, as we released our our gun trace data report, thank the mayor and the administration for that, we're seeing some things that are very consistent. Ten percent of the gun dealers are causing fifty-five percent of the the crime guns that are being found in our streets. Ten percent of the streets are causing ninety percent of our crime in our community. And going forward, I just would like us to consider, I'll support this budget, but I'd like us to consider putting larger investment, focused investments into those ten percent neighborhoods that are historically consistently being plagued with the violence that is happening in this city. Budgets are a reflection of your priorities. So if public safety is our priority, then we need, we heard one of our our visitors from Sixty-Seven Precinct Clergy, the clergy representative for Eric Adams, Mayor Adams, that when we, when I was driving him around this city, him, the individuals from that Brooklyn community, and was showing them the areas that are just distressed in our community, and told them that it was ten percent of these communities are causing ninety percent of the violence and crime in our community. He said, well, that's a simple equation, why don't you take ninety percent of the money and put it into ten percent of those neighborhoods? And the problem's fixed. I don't know if that actually convicts the problem, but I will say it did, you know, send off a light to say that we do need to invest more in these distressed communities, the one four six oh five, one four six eleven. All the data is pointing us directly to where we need to go, and I would like to see us doing more investments in those areas. Thank you.
Council vice president?
Yeah, and this budget actually saw a decrease in violence prevention. I don't feel like this budget adequately reflects the priorities that council has been hearing from the community. The investment in housing, violence prevention, crisis response, youth needs is not commensurate to the magnitude of the crisis that we are seeing in this community. This budget continues the decades-old disproportionate investment in downtown and projects like the convention center and the Blue Cross Arena that our neighborhoods, our neighborhoods, our youth and our family will not see a benefit from. Council is a, is the people's body, like we hear from you all the time. And our role is to be responsive to the community, and our charter sets us up to be co-equal. But amending the budget, we don't typically do that, at least not anymore, we used to. Other levels of government, state, federal, the the executive proposes a budget and the legislature amends it because we are designed to be responsive to the community. It shouldn't be a personal affront if council has its own priorities, because we hear from the community all the time. I think the transfer of unspent funds to reflect some of those priorities that we've heard is a really great first step. But I'm hoping that in the future, that we start to take that role more seriously and and put forth our own priorities like violence prevention. The status quo isn't working, and I think we have to change the way that we're that we're investing our resources so that we're investing directly in the people and our community. And when the public sees a nine-zero vote, they think everything's okay. And so because I can't amend it, I have to vote no, so I'm voting, I'm voting no.
Council member Martin?
So there are so many issues with this body as it relates to the budget, starting with submitting a budget on behalf of council without council even having a chance to have input in that process, having a chance to address what our key performance indicator indicators would be of a thriving council body. The decision to cut funding from the police accountability board while sending different messages to council members, like, the whole process was very sad, it was very unfair. It felt like decisions were made grounded in patriarchal thinking, like a man who was the president has the authority to do do certain things and take certain liberties without the inputs of many of the women on this body and many of the other council members. So that's one of the reasons I'll be voting no. I do not feel like the council budget represents my priorities and my colleagues' priorities as a body. I, while I am voting no, I do want to take this moment to thank all the city staff who had a hand in putting together this budget, and also the council staff who did provide a detailed analysis, and the administration for introducing some new and exciting initiatives like funding mental health counselors in our rec centers, a universal basic income program, and also a commitment to funding social workers in our libraries. I believe that these kinds of investments show an understanding that in order to keep our community safe, whole, and flourishing, we need to start by addressing the root causes of poverty. And these initiatives aim at doing so, they're a strong start, but they're simply not enough when we compare their with, compare them with how we are investing other dollars in different departments. I cannot in good conscience support a city budget that approves the largest Rochester Police Department budget in the history of our city. A hundred and nine million dollars is untenable. Last, we just gave an eighteen million dollar increase. And to be able to continue funding police at this level, it means we're taking money out of different initiatives that also keep our community safe. I think it's also even more difficult for me to get behind this budget because of the inequity of pay between RPD officers and other critical public safety workers from departments like Pathways to Peace and the Person in Crisis Team. There are also essential workers in our community who are forced to work multiple jobs, little overtime pay while our RPD gets over almost a hundred dollars an hour in overtime. So once again, I I am grateful for the community speaking up about investments in mental health, non-police crisis response, and that being included. However, we still have a long way to go. I think we can do better, and it's, to do better, it means we have to fully and intentionally invest in the basic needs of our community.
Council member Patterson?
I will be voting in support of this budget. No budget is ever perfect. I find it interesting that council members comment on the gender of our council president at this time. And it's interesting because in my time, the vast majority of the time that I've been on council, the council president was Loretta Scott, who was a woman. And the process and methods that we've used in council to make decisions, make changes, have not changed significantly. Part of the challenge of being a council member is working collaboratively with your colleagues. It is developing relationships so that you can work to do the work of the people. And in many instances, when we have our votes and they are five-four, I would encourage the community to understand that there are five, or potentially, in some cases, six members of council, council dealing with a controversial issue. And we engage in conversation among ourselves. Now, if other council members feel as though they are left out, it may well be because they've chosen not to communicate with their colleagues on their issues and their concerns, or they have done so, or they have behaved in a manner as is their right as a council member, because every council member gets to sit in the seat the way they want to. But you can do it the way you want to do it, but nobody has an obligation to go along with what you want to do. So I humbly submit to the community, this, it seems as though we fight a lot more than we used to. And we do, because we disagree greatly. Though we all may be Democrats, Will Rogers, to paraphrase him, said, I'm not a member of an organized political party, I'm a Democrat. And there is a diversity of opinion within our party, and there is a diversity of opinion within this council. Just because we're arguing doesn't mean that we aren't all committed to the work of the people. But it does mean that we can and do disagree. But overall, the process, the work that we do, the commitment that we all have to this city is not a thing to be questioned by any council member or by any member of the community. We are all committed to the work, we're all doing the work as best we see it, as best we understand it, and we represent it as best we can. So I would just offer that to not just the community, but also to my colleagues. We don't all have to get along, we don't have to like each other, but we should all be willing to work together. And that might take a little time to build a collaborative relationship with your colleagues. Thank you.
Council member PO?
Thanks. Part of the city budget is the city school district. The city school district is the number one reason for why our city is failing. They're a number one reason for poverty, because our kids can't read. Number one reason for violence, because if our kids can't read, they can't get a job, so they turn to the streets. So until the city school district and their budget answers to this city and this council, I would never be happy with this budget. But like Mike said, Mike said, not every budget is perfect, nor do I look for that. But I would love to see city council have control over the school board budget. Thank you.
Council member Smith?
So I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to reflect on what council member Patterson said about relationship building and acknowledge that, make no mistake, building relationships on this council has been hard. And I know I have tried. And so I just want to put that out there, that it is not that easy to build relationships on this council because there are serious differences that needs to be acknowledged. And so with that acknowledgement, I would ask, and I will, I believe this for myself as well, for myself and my colleagues, for us to be more open with one another, to look past our pride and our ego, and think about what is best for our community. In terms of this budget, a guiding principle for me moving through this process was equity. And when I think about reading and reviewing the processes, the practices, the KPIs, where the money was going, things are not distributed equitable for all of our residents in the city of Rochester to thrive. I do not believe that we have done enough for our most vulnerable who are living at and below the poverty level, which is why we remain number four in the nation for poverty. And I a hundred percent agree with council member Lightfoot when he says we need more community investment. And until that happens, I cannot vote for yes for this budget.
Hey, with that, I just would comment that to the administration, this is a generally good news budget in terms of not having any major cuts in areas that are a priority to the community. I think, as everyone has said before, there's always room for us to continue to work on issues that are front and center in our community and and that that we all hear on a on a weekly, if not daily, basis from our constituents. But with that, I I I am in support and in favor of this budget. I'm going to move us to a roll call vote on this, and we will start, clerk Washington, roll call vote.
Council member Gruber?
Yes.
Council member Harris?
Yes.
Council member Lightfoot?
Yes.
Council member Martin?
No.
Council member Patterson?
Yes.
Council member PO?
No.
Council member Smith? Council, vice president Lupien?
No.
President Melendez?
Yes, motion carries. Chair Gruber, do you have a motion related to introductory number two fifty-six, adoption of budget estimates for school purposes for the twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four fiscal year and appropriations sums set forth therein?
I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number two fifty-six from committee. Can I have a second?
Is there a second? So moved and seconded, all in favor of discharging the item from committee, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The mo, a roll call vote?
Council member Gruber?
Yes.
Council member Harris?
Yes.
Council member Lightfoot?
Yes.
Council member Martin? Council member Patterson?
Nay.
Council member PO?
Yes.
Council member Smith? Vice president Lupien?
This is the school district, right? Excuse me, I need to change mine to abstain. Yeah, I'm abstaining. I'm sorry.
President Melendez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so before we vote on the item, council member Harris and vice president Lupien submitted disclosure of interest forms as they are implored by the school district. They will recuse and abstain.
I'm sorry, sorry about that. They're recusing themselves?
Yes.
Okay, can I vote, change my vote to no, please?
The motion still carries, but yes. So council member Patterson?
Thank you. So one billion, one hundred and thirteen, basically one billion, one hundred and forty.
Can you get into Mike, council member Patterson?
One billion, basically one hundred and forty million dollars, what the Rochester City School District is proposing to spend. During the budget hearings, I prior, I asked our two state monitors, I said, look, we've got a crisis of reading in this school district. The vast majority of our children do not come close to reading on grade level. Where in this budget do you show me, does it, does it show me that they're addressing this problem? And the state monitor said, well, you know, we're doing some stuff, and it's in there, but it's really kind of hard to find, so, okay. So superintendent's here, and I'm asking these questions about the crisis of reading, the fact that only ten percent of, I'm sorry, only eight percent of our kids, K through eight, read on grade level, which means ninety-two percent don't. One billion, one hundred and forty million, crisis. You got an awful lot of money. Tell me what you're doing to address this crisis. Still haven't gotten an answer on what you're spending to address this crisis in reading in our district. Now, give them credit, they are embracing the science of reading. They're going back to this old thing all of us old folks remember from back in the day, they're going back to phonics. They're going to teach kids letter sounds and how to sound out words, and that's good. You know, I know, I have faith in the Rochester City School District to be able to do this because Rochester City School District teachers taught me how to read. And I was in the slow reading group, and it took me some time to get to a point where I became a decent reader, fell in love with reading, and became a library kid. So I believe in the power of education to be transformative in the lives of individuals. I believe that education is the path out of poverty. But if you can't read, it's really hard to get there. And if a budget reflects your priorities, and you got a billion and some change, and I ask you, what are you spending, and you can't tell me, and I realize, I'm, you know, I'm I'm asking the superintendent these questions, and he can't answer that question for me, and it dawned on me, he can't answer the question because the board members haven't asked him these questions. Why am I, as a council member, asking you questions that your board isn't asking? That's frightening. And you know, what's really troubling about this? And you know, what's really troubling about this is that they got a report from State Monitor Shelley Jallow back in November telling them that there was a crisis in reading and they were like, "Oh, my God, this is horrible. Oh, we should do something. Oh, the poor babies." And yet, is there a Marshall Plan for reading in the Rochester City School District? If you don't know what the Marshall Plan is, Google it. Long story short, after World War II, we rebuilt Europe. I'm looking for that level of commitment. I'm looking for training, something that is large and intensive and expensive, especially when you've got a hundred million dollars of ARPA dollars that you probably won't have next year. Because there's this old saying from back in the day when I was a young man, we were all told, you know, the prisons projected their prison, their future prison population based upon the reading scores of the children in the third grade. And that is not true. But what is true is that if you're not reading on grade level by the third grade, you're multiple times more likely to go to prison. That's true. So when we're looking at our babies and we're going, "Hey, man, what's going on?", the babies can't read. And that's not me saying that the babies can't read, that's the state monitor saying that the babies can't read. Ninety-two percent of them, K through eight, not even close to being on grade level. So no, I'm not voting for this. There's no way I can vote for this because if you can't read K through eight, when you get to ninth grade, what can you do? You're a victim in the building. You can't do the work. You can't understand the work. You're not even close. And yet, we continue to spend these dollars. And if they were educating and feeding, and I meant feeding came to my mind, if they were feeding our children the knowledge they need, this basic course set, I wouldn't have a problem. I'd just vote yes. But in good conscience, there's no way in hell I can vote for this. I can't vote for this. Now, to be clear to the community, I want you to understand, my no vote will have absolutely no impact whatsoever on the budget and the priorities and the action of this school board. They're going to do what they do because there's nothing we can do about it. But that doesn't mean I got to co-sign it, so I won't. Thank you.
Councilmember Pio?
Thank you. During the hearings, we learned that part of this budget is going to transition our school district to telehealth, meaning your children can now have direct access to a doctor without... All you have to do is sign one time and you sign your kid's health away. They'll be able to have their doctor prescribe them anything and everything without you even knowing. That's scary. On top of that, this is about, what, thirty-five thousand dollars per student that we're going to be spending on a obviously failing entity? It's just ridiculous what we're doing to our children. We are setting up for absolute failure on every level.
Councilmember Gruber?
The math has to change. The enrollment is declining really drastically, really fast. The budget keeps going up. Interestingly, the census of 2020 was the last time, was the first time in forever in probably six censuses that we've seen the city of Rochester's population grow, albeit very small. But we have somehow a growing, slightly growing city and a precipitously fast declining enrollment, and yet the budget goes up disproportionately to that. It's just untenable. It has to stop. I'm going to vote yes on this budget, recognizing what Councilmember Patterson said, it really is all a symbol. And I believe that there seems to be a moment of unity in the school district with the new superintendent, the current board. People seem to be excited about the future, so I'm going to say yes, but at the end of the day, there's going to need to be some hard decisions, including school closures. It's going to have to come. The enrollment is going to have to, they're going to have to figure out how to rightsize the enrollment and we can't continue to let their financial challenges impacting things like our bond rating. So right now, things are okay. I'm going to vote yes, but next year's going to be a really tough year for them.
Any additional comments? Councilmember Martin?
Yes, so there's new leadership in the school district and in having conversations with them, I see significant progress in this year's budget in comparison to last year's. There is still a lot of work to be done, but a lot of the things like focusing on restorative justice, social emotional learning, they are prioritizing those things and I'm just really excited to continue working with them and see the changes they make to enhance our community. So I will be voting yes.
Okay, so before we go to a vote, I'll make a quick comment to explain my vote. Last year, the budget was zero seven with two abstentions. I'm not certain how the budget vote's going to go this year, but I'm going to say that you at least have one yes. And my no vote is actually related to the process. It's kind of a protest vote. We have no real authority. I'm not quite certain why we even vote on this annually. I mentioned that last year. And also, one of the ways that I think we can improve the process is to work with the city school district to have our budget hearing earlier in the process, have our budget hearing before the Rochester City School District votes on their proposed budget on an annual basis. And that would allow the council, if nothing else, an opportunity to weigh in and have our thoughts and their community's thoughts that we represent also considered in the feedback as the district considers their budget. So with that, I'll turn to Clerk Washington to give us a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Abstain.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
No.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
No.
Councilmember Pio?
No.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Lupien?
Abstain.
Abstain. President Melendez?
No. So the number there is, Clerk Washington, on the roll call?
Three, four.
Three, four, and two.
Thank you. All right, Chair Gruber, a motion related to introductory number 257, levying taxes for municipal purposes for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023, and expiring June 30, 2024.
I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 257 from committee. Can I have a second?
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of discharging from committee, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
We have two abstentions. Actually, 257, there's no need to abstain from this one.
It's 258, so yes. I vote yes.
All right, so any discussion on this item? I'll move it to a vote on introductory number 257. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yep.
Councilmember Pio?
Nay.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Lupien?
Yes.
President Melendez?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, Chair Gruber, do you have a motion related to introductory number 258, levying taxes for school purposes for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023, and expiring June 30, 2024?
Sure do. I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 258 from committee. Can I have a second?
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of discharging introductory number 258 from committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
And we have two abstentions. Motion carries. So now we'll vote on introductory number 258. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Gruber? Councilmember Harris?
Abstain.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin? Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Pio?
Nope.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Lupien?
Abstain.
President Melendez?
Yes. Motion carries. Chair Gruber, do you have a motion related to introductory number 259, a local improvement ordinance, street cleaning, street and sidewalk snow removal, and hazardous sidewalk repair commencing July 1, 2023, and expiring June 30, 2024?
I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 259 from committee. Can I have a second?
Move it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of discharging the item, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now let's vote on introductory number 259.
Can I, real quick?
Yes, Councilmember Pio?
My vote, yes on this one, is because Commissioner Perrin is amazing at his job.
That's all it could?
With that, we'll move to a roll call vote?
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lightfoot?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin? Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Pio?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Smith? Vice President Lupien?
Yes.
President Melendez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Chair Gruber, do you have a motion related to introductory number 260, confirming the assessment amounts and charges to be inserted into the annual tax rolls for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023, and expiring June 30, 2024?
I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 260 from committee. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll vote on discharging the item from committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now let's vote on introductory number 260. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chair Gruber, do you have a motion related to introductory number 261, amending the municipal code with respect to water rates?
I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 261 from committee. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we'll vote on discharging introductory number 261 from committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll vote on introductory number 261. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chair Gruber, do you have a motion related to introductory number 263, appropriating funds and amending the 2022-23 budget to support the public libraries MiFi program?
I'd like to make a motion to discharge introductory number 263 from committee. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we'll vote on discharging the item from committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we vote on this, two quick things. One, Councilmember Gruber has submitted a disclosure of interest form as council liaison to the Rochester Public Library Board. He may discuss and vote on the item. And I just want to thank my colleagues for, you know, this is really a reaction to the budget hearings, asking the right questions during the budget hearings and then be able to respond from the council side with some resources. So I'd like to thank everyone for their support in hopefully moving this forward. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With no other miscellaneous business to come before the council, we are adjourned.